... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united we are, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of reflection for a, an employee that has passed. Guy Trujillo worked for the city of Turlock for twenty-three years. He was hired on April nineteenth nineteen ninety-five. He started his career with the city of Turlock on the streets team. There he was a vital part of the team due to his vast skillset. He was an experienced heavy equipment operator and performed popular maintenance along with a variety of streets-related tasks. On January first two thousand and one, Guy promoted this level of senior worker and transferred to the parks team where he applied his expert concrete and playground installation skills to projects throughout our park system. He loved his job and being able to see his parks looking good was very important to him. He took a tremendous amount of pride in his areas of responsibility. Guy especially looked forward to Arbor Day where he could help children learn about the importance of being good stewards of our urban forests and teaching them how to properly plant trees. Sadly, on November second two thousand and eighteen, Guy passed away after an extended illness. Without a doubt, Guy will be remembered for his dry sense of humor and joking nature. He always had a witty comeback and as his colleagues can confirm, was always sure to get in the last word. Despite his tough exterior, he had the biggest heart and truly cared for others. He will be mysteriously by all of the city family. At this time, we will now have a moment of reflection in honor of the life and service Thank you, let's give him a round of applause for his hard work.
(applause)
... And we do, we work really hard. But in addition to that, I would just like to say thank you for taking the time to, to recognize us for, for our contribution. Thank you.
Congratulations.[152.19][152.19](applause) All right, and now I'm gonna ask Allison Banggiler to come on up for the Active Military Banner Retirement Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, please, thank you. Mayor, I'm sorry, you got all the way back there. We were gonna ask if you could come up front, please, so as our members come up, you can shake their hand. And Amber, I know you're gonna come up and help too, right? We're here tonight to celebrate a very special program in the city of Turlock. Two thousand seventeen eighteen was our inaugural season for our Active Military Banner Program. And unless you haven't made a trip out to Mona Vista Crossings, you've seen these wonderful banners that line countryside between Folk Earth and Mona Vista highlighting the various service members that represent our community. And we were quite honored to be a part of that in that our staff were charged with facilitating the program and of course our wonderful maintenance staff charged with raising and lowering the banners. And so tonight, we are essentially retiring the first batch of banners that were on display last year. If you missed it, we have twenty-five new banners that are now flying along the corridor and we're very excited to be able to get to honor all of them in the coming year. So tonight, I'd like to thank our sponsors for the program. None of this would have been possible without the Central Park Evening Market and Golden State Farmers Market Association. They were our five-star sponsor. We also had support from our local American Legion Rex-ish eighty-eight post and we could not do that without them. Essentially, their support meant that none of our families had to pay out of pocket for their banners, so that was very special and that was a goal that we had as staff to try and make that happen. So again, thank you to our sponsors for supporting this important program. So we put together a presentation here and the way that we'll run this, because we do have twenty individuals that we'll be recognizing tonight, we'll run through the banner, we'll see what it looked like up on countryside, and then we ask that when you hear your name or your family member's name, that you please come on up and we'll present you with your banner. And because there's twenty of them, as tempted as we are to cheer every time, I ask that you please reserve your clapping till the very end and we'll give them one big round of applause. Do we have any representatives here tonight from our sponsors? Anybody from the market or the post? The post? Can you, would you like to come up and help present as well? Thank you so much. Okay, let's begin. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much to the families. And real quick, hey, Allison, what's the timeline? Are those, the new banners already up? All right, fantastic, so we'll go check those out. Okay, moving on to our Pet of the Month presented by Ms. Glenna Jackson. Come on up, Glenna.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
How am I, thank you.
There's so much anticipation and suspense about this next Pet of the Month. Which one's it gonna be?
That's it gonna be, oh my goodness. Thank you, councilmembers, mayor, city manager. It's an honor always to do Pet of the Month, which is sponsored by Team Apps, our management team, which includes a spay and neuter microchip. And all those of you left here, you're here to adopt a pet, so let's get on this. So remember Jack? Well, Jack was this for quite a while, but we did a little video the next day and he got adopted by this wonderful family who came back on Saturday and adopted another dog for, so he could have a friend. So this was Jack from last month. So this is Sadie, she's a female Chihuahua, and she's a spayed female, she's about three pounds, and she's a really perfect lapdog for anybody who's looking for a new pet. This month, we are honoring our veterans and our active military and we are proud to say as of today, we had eight adoptions so far from veterans that came in. We had a gentleman that came in today and actually adopted two dogs through this program. The shelter's open and Monday through Saturday, ten to two, will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday and remember that next month in December, all of our adoptions are gonna be at no charge, so we look forward to everybody bringing a pet into your home for the holidays. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions, of course, for Glenna. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Give her a round of applause for all her hard work.[531.16][531.16](applause) Mr. Superintendent, you wanna meet me up here? Come on up.
What's this about, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yeah? So we're pulling a fast one on our county superintendent. Give him a round of applause as he goes into retirement. Congratulations.[554.16][554.16](applause) Thank you so much. It's always fun to embarrass the superintendent, so we're gonna try and talk about all these great accolades, because I know you don't brag about yourself, so as mayor, I'm gonna do that for you. So the retirement of Tom Chen Young, Stanislaus County Office of Education Superintendent. Whereas Tom Chen Young was elected Stanislaus County Office of Education Superintendent of Schools in November two thousand and six and sworn into office on January ninth two thousand and seven. Whereas under Tom's leadership, the Office of Education provides direct instructional programs and support services to twenty-five school districts, including a hundred and ninety schools and over a hundred and six thousand students. Whereas upon graduating from Stanford University, I'm a cow bear, so I won't hold that against you, I'm sorry, Tom was drafted by the Houston Astros Professional Baseball Organization where he played minor league ball for two years and was then led to a career in teaching. Whereas Tom began his teaching career in nineteen seventy-five at Fremont High School, shortly thereafter moving to the Central Valley to begin teaching at Bayer High School where he taught economics, government, American history, special education classes, and served as the activities director, including coaching baseball and basketball. Whereas though Tom enjoyed the classroom, he eventually entered the field of school administration, holding positions as assistant principal, assistant superintendent, and eventually superintendent of schools for Stanislaus County. And whereas Tom has been a champion and leader of civics education, character development, parent involvement, and career technical education programs throughout Stanislaus County and various countywide campaigns and initiatives, one of which the city of Turlock supported, the Choose Civility Initiative, encouraging students, parents, and community members to choose positive and respectful behaviors in their personal and work lives. And whereas Tom will retire from his position as Stanislaus County Office of Education Superintendent of Schools effective January fourth two thousand and nineteen, of which he will be truly missed throughout the education system. Now therefore, I, Gary Soyseth, and Ms. Pollard, come on up, you're gonna give this to Tom as well, get up here. By virtue of authority, vest me as mayor of the city of Turlock and president of the board, and on behalf of the entire city council and all our citizens, do hereby commend and recognize Tom Chen Young for his many years of valuable educational leadership and contributions and wish him well in his upcoming retirement. Congratulations.[691.73][691.73](applause) Now the microphone's yours.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, and that was quite a surprise and certainly very much appreciated. You know, you find out when you approach seventy that the time, the dash between student discount and senior discount goes by really quick and my wife, she said, you know, you're not gonna run again, are you? And I said, well, yes, I want to, I want to. And she said, you're getting old now, you need to let some of the young kids take over, but it's been a great run and I don't feel old, but she said, last weekend when we went to an antique store, she said, Tom, three people bid on you. So I guess, okay, I guess that tells me I'm getting there. So is it, do I roll into my?
You ready?
Okay, so I've, I've been granted a few minutes to talk a little bit about state of education in Stanislaus County and thank you very much. And I just wanna thank the board, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the staff, and the esteemed audience that's remaining with us for your attention while I go through this, because education, as you know, is just the fundamental foundation for people to achieve the American dream. And so I wanted to just let you know what's been happening in our county and good news to report. I did want you to know that we've had initiatives, Gary mentioned, the mayor mentioned, some of those initiatives, very proud of that, but most importantly, I'm proud of the dedication of all the educators in our county, all the twenty-five school districts and the teachers and the pair of educators. Everyone is really dedicated and it warms my heart. That's one of the things I will certainly miss the most, not being connected on a daily basis, but here we go. So the state of education, now first, I wanna give you a little historical perspective. Since nineteen eighty, you can see the change in enrollment. So in our state, we're educating over two million more students than we did back in nineteen eighty. And when you think about, well, are you building more schools and what's happening with how you're accommodating all those students? We're not building too many schools, so class sizes naturally increase and that adds to a bit of a challenge to educate. Now these next two slides, I want you to take a look, because this is our current reality that we have in Stanislaus County and this pretty much mirrors the state of California. So back in nineteen eighty, you can see the demographics of our student population. And now we fast forward to today and you can see it's almost flipped with the demographics of the students. And that's, that's great, but the challenge that lies ahead for schoolteachers and administrators, the fact that the number of Latino students that we have in our classes, about eighty-five percent are English learners, which means at the end of the day, they go home and they speak another language when they go home. So the challenge is to help these young people acquire English and at the same time, we wanna get you reading at grade level by third grade, because you know, they build prisons based on the grade level reading of the number of students in third grade. And so that's a real key indicator and that is the challenge that all of us in California are working towards achieving. So I wanted to let you know, in the state of California, we have over ten thousand schools and in Stanislaus County, you can see the number of schools there. This really comes down to this book, it's called The Coming Jobs War, is written by Jim Clifton. Jim is the CEO of the Gallup Poll. Many of you have heard the Gallup Poll. And six years in a row, he has done a worldwide poll. And this worldwide poll asks a number of questions, but number one question, what is of most concern to you as a human being? Not just an American, because this is worldwide. And six years in a row, it's been the same response. And so when I first read this, I thought, okay, my number one concern, well, the economy's a concern, healthcare's a concern, terrorism is a concern, immigration, all those are, those are viable concerns. The number one concern worldwide, six years in a row, are jobs. Am I gonna have a job? But more importantly, will my child have a job where they can make a living? And worldwide, a good job is thirty hours a week with no benefits, worldwide. So we need to make sure that we are making our students aware of this and that most importantly, we are preparing them for future employment and making sure that they have the skills necessary. This is the world that we live in, is all pretty much technology and we have to adapt and make sure that young people find a balance so that there's not an overdose of the digital devices that they have. It's changed from the years when I was in school and in a one-room little schoolhouse and now it's, learning is anytime, anywhere, because if you've got a mobile device, then you can learn. We recently had a study and said, are young people today more equipped to problem solve today or twenty or thirty years ago? And most of the people said that they were better off to problem solve twenty years ago. Why is that? Well, because now when they have a problem, they just Google it or Ask Siri. And that's not peeling back the layers, so we need to do a more effective job of that. But this was a recent study that was shown that high school graduates, all of a sudden, are out in the real world and they're saying, well, wait, they didn't teach me about that in high school. They didn't tell me that I had to know this and that it was forty hours a week and it's, I have to start at a certain time. Those are soft skills that we really need to impress upon young people, because those are the skills that will get them jobs in their future. So our schools are focusing on helping young people see the importance of those work skills. As the mayor mentioned, we have had four countywide initiatives in my twelve years. The first one we did was Everyday Counts. And the importance of this is just to let parents know that being in school every day is, is just vital to the success of students. Recently, I was at a conference in Los Angeles and the night before, in the lobby area, must have been close to four hundred Japanese students, high school students, and they were dressed to the T and they spoke perfect English. And I said, oh, you're here on vacation? And they kinda looked at me like, vacation? Well, you're here at Magic Mountain, Disneyland? No! Well, what are you here for? We're here to look at career opportunities for us. Well, these young people want jobs in America and they're competing against our students for those same jobs. And we need to make sure our young people are competitive and we have to do that. And being in school is important. In Japan, they go to school a minimum of two hundred and thirty days a year. In California, a hundred and eighty. You do the math, fifty days a year times twelve years, that's a lot of additional learning time that those students have. The good thing about the Everyday Counts Initiative, every school district participated and it generated an additional three million dollars into our local economies for the schools. Following that was an initiative called Fit for the Future, and we did this because the officials at Kaiser Permanente met with me one day and said, Tom, based on the physical fitness test that we have analyzed in your county, you have an epidemic right now of childhood obesity and you need to address that. So we got right on it. Twenty-five school districts were on board and we signed up with then-Governor Schwarzenegger's Fit for the Future campaign that he had. And I'm happy to report that two years in a row, we were selected as the county of the state for getting it, parents and everyone involved with being more physically active. The governor's secretary would call me like on a Wednesday and say, the governor would like you to be in San Diego on Friday and share with people what you're doing in Stanislaus County to promote well-being. And so that was really nice to be recognized in a positive way. Also, three of our local school districts received one hundred thousand dollar gems for their participation in that initiative. Third initiative came along, and you heard the mayor mention this earlier, and that was Choose Civility. Why would we need Choose Civility? Well, back when we had the Great Recession a few years ago, many school board meetings became very antagonistic, because local boards had to make cuts, difficult cuts. Well, cut the librarian, but keep the coach. Or get rid of the music program, but save, it was really sad. It was sad, the way the behavior ensued and as a result, we started to choose some civility initiative. And I'm happy to report that the third bullet down there, it says, we had over two hundred and fifty business partners in that initiative. And it was very gratifying. On a Friday casual dress day in Modesto, I would see employees walking around wearing t-shirts that say, just be nice, and things like that, that their employers had purchased for them to wear on those days. And also, we were contacted and shared our information with seven other counties in the state and we went out and trained them, so we had that ripple effect of people trying to be nice. Many people have told me, Tom, we need to bring Choose Civility back again, and sadly, that could be true. And the last one that I'm referring to, the initiative just completed, Destination Graduation, I have a few extra copies, Jennifer, if people would like them afterwards. Each of the council members have them. We just did this initiative. Why? Why, you ask? Well, we did it, because when we started this four years ago, the high school graduation rate in this county, as you can see, was seventy-eight percent. That means, this is in our county, four years ago, nine hundred freshmen started school and four years later, they didn't walk across the stage and get that handshake and a piece of paper. Well, then what happened to them? Good question, but do the math, nine hundred, nine hundred, nine hundred. We can't sustain that, because these young people then are not productive citizens. So the county office, local districts, we're all on board. And what we do about it? We've raised that rate and we moved the needle and we are above the state average for graduation rates right now. Our program was so successful, I was recently back east at a conference where I was one of the keynote presenters and afterwards, I had an audience that came up and they were asking, what's the secret to your success? And I thought, well, listen, we're a long ways from where we wanna be. But here's the deal, Baltimore, Detroit, Cleveland, big cities, big cities, fifty percent dropout rate in those big urban cities. Our country, we can't, we can't sustain that. Education, the American dream, that goes hand in hand and you have to have people that have hope. And if they're dropping out, they, they're not having hope. So we're very proud of the work that we did with Destination Graduation. I want you to know that we brought in best practices, we brought in speakers, we brought in Steve, and he came and spoke to the Gallo folks at the Gallo. We had a thousand people show up to Gallo and the young kids, when they saw him, they go, the Woz! It was just like they'd seen the Messiah or something almost. Those of you that don't know, this is Steve Wozniak, and he by himself built the first Apple computer. And my claim to fame is I went to high school and graduated with Wozniak. And my wife often kisses me, Tom, you should've spent more time with the electronics club. Could've been a better friend with him. I'll have you know that he didn't charge us when he came to Modesto to do this as a favor to me, because we still stay connected once in a while. But we had the Woz come over and talk about entrepreneurship. Look at this picture, Lisa on the left and Megan on the right, we sent them to Philadelphia. Because why? Because they received a national award for Stanislaus County, because we were considered a pace setter county for the work that we've been doing in early literacy, early childhood reading. So we're getting after it, ladies and gentlemen. I want you to know that we know that we've got challenges, but we're not afraid of that and we're going after it with vim and vigor. And we're relentless at getting this, because we know of the importance of it. Now, you know that the Stanislaus County Office of Education recently purchased the former Modesto B building. This is a game changer, I'm telling you so, you mark my words. Because in the front of that, almost two hundred thousand square foot building, we have office space and areas, we're gonna have a daycare center, we have our major Comeback Kid program, and in the backside of the Modesto B, we're having vocational training. It's, it's a full service. You come in, you've got childcare issues, bring them in, we'll take care of them. Comeback Kid program is awesome. This is for young people that have dropped out of school and you come back in, get your high school diploma, not a GED, not a GED, you're gonna get your high school diploma here. And today, eight hundred young people have come back and gotten that. The teachers say these are the most fun people to work with. Why? The single word, motivation. Oh my gosh, when you're motivated, isn't that something? It's wonderful. And I can tell you that at the graduations, the last one I attended, the keynote speaker, a mother of three, forty-one years old, her children in the front row, the husband, flowers, bouquets, I mean, it was balloons, it was amazing. But she said, I did this for two reasons, two reasons. Number one, how can I tell my children to value education and I don't have a high school diploma myself? But most importantly, and number two, I wanna work! I'm like, what a novel thought, somebody that wants to work. And she said, I couldn't, I couldn't get a job without that diploma. And good for her, she's on her way and people were so happy, they're just wiping the tears of happiness from her. So Comeback Kid's a great program and this Vote program, these are men and women that are getting trained. You wanna become an electrician, you wanna become a carpenter, cement layer, you do, you name it, we've got it back there in the back of that building and we can get you trained up. We had our first cohort graduate this June and once again, I can tell you, out of those thirty graduates, twenty-seven already had a job in hand, a good-paying job. How good of a job? I can tell you, one of the wives had her two kids hanging on her, they came, she came up, gave me a big hug, she said, I can't tell you, my husband and I have been managing a mobile home park of ten mobile homes for the last four years and that's what we do. That's what we do. And he got his certificate, he's got a job at Frito-Lay as a mechanic, and guess what? She could hardly, she was so emotional, she said, we're renting, we're moving into a three-bedroom house. Oh my gosh, ladies and gentlemen, if that's not pursuing the American dream, I don't know what is. It's, it's really great and that's, we need to get people on their feet and then they revitalize our communities and everybody wins. It's a win-win. So, but, but there's more, I wanna let you know. The next new initiative, and the reason why I've been going out to all the city councils and board of supervisors, is to let them know, the word's out, we have a new initiative that is all-encompassing, this is awesome. I wish I'd be here for it, dang, I can't believe I'm missing on this. But here's the deal, this one is called Cradle to Career, and I wanted to let you know about it, because soon, in the springtime, it's gonna get rolled out and you'll be hearing about it. And the whole idea is to take young people from birth all the way through to a career and help them find their purpose in life and make sure that we don't have young people slipping through the cracks, because it's just our moral obligation. As human beings, that's what we, that's what we have to do. So Cradle to Career, we already have business partners lined up, we have educators lined up, and I'm just so excited to announce to you that we're off and running with that. So what we have here is to dreams be filled with hope, and I know that, because I see the faces of hope every day and that's, isn't that our charge in life, is to try to push that boulder a little bit and make life better for the next person? And it's been a distinct honor and a pleasure for me to be in this position the last twelve years. You know, the, the riddle is, why can't you run through a campground? And the answer to that is, well, you can't run, because it's past tense, you have to ran. Past tense? So I say that, because in a couple more months, I'm gonna be past tense, I'm gonna be out of here, but we're in good hands, we've got Scott Kikekendall coming in and he's gonna take it and run with it. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank you, most importantly, councilmember and the, and the community of Turlock for your support and value in education. I got part of my heart here in Turlock, I spent, I spent eight great years at Turlock Junior High and Turlock High School, so I'm Bulldog, got that blue and gold, blue and gold, have you ever, a little of that? So thank you very much, sorry to take so much time, but I just had to do it.
You will be missed, absolutely. Thank you so much, Tom, appreciate it. All right, moving on to public participation, it's the time set aside for the public to address the council on any item that they'd like. We'd like to address this on an item that we're going to be... We'd like to address this on an item that we're going to be taking up in the agenda later on, we ask you to have your comments at that time. There are blue cards in the back that you can fill out, put your name and address. But with that, I'll have Supervisor Vito Kiesa come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So one was a, I wrote two things down while Tom was talking, the one was a question and the other one was a comment. The first question was, "How do I bottle up that enthusiasm?" I, I tell you what, I get excited every time he comes to the board, and I, I've heard this pitch before, and I got more excited today, my heart's beating. The second thing is, I sat back there and prayed that I wasn't gonna have to follow him, because that's the tough part. Thank you for all you've done. I tell you, on behalf of the citizens of Stanislaw County, it is a tremendous opportunity to have worked with you, and you will be sorely missed, for sure. I hope, I know we talked about, you've got other plans, and hopefully you'll stay involved in the community because you, you've been so successful in your programs. So thank you. A couple of things, I want to talk about something we did at our last Board of Supervisor meeting, let everyone know, the Empire Migrant Center Housing Project. If anyone's been to South Street and Empire, which is on the south side, obviously, of Empire, right off of Santa Fe Road, there is a migrant labor camp, ninety units. It is currently run by the Housing Authority of Stanislaw County, and we are going to utilize twenty-two of those units as a cold-weather shelter. And the reason we're only doing twenty-two instead of the whole ninety is because they're set up actually with heating in it, the rest of them, because the labor camp is only occupied about May through the middle of November, and we're going to try and utilize it middle of November till about the end of April as a cold-weather shelter, if, if we're successful in this pilot program, and we might be expanding it. So going forward, you know how difficult it is to cite something for the homeless, this will be for homeless families only, people who are currently enrolled in case management through CSA and their housing support program. I'm as excited as I've been about anything right now. I went to Beard Brook Park last Friday and just took a walk through there, and if anyone hasn't been, it's pretty heartbreaking, not because of the tent city that's been located there, but because of the children that are there. Some people choose the lifestyle, some people have disorders, whether they're mental health or co-occurring drug and alcohol disorders, and some people just want to live that lifestyle. And it's hard to differentiate, you know, until you get people in, in housing into a spot to do case management, to get them into services, because that's the first order, is the stability of housing. So I'm excited because of the family component, and we'll, we're going to evaluate it come April and see how it works. And, and if it is successful, the, the community will be successful. Which leads me to subject number two, a couple of weeks ago, I was made aware of a, the Golden State Road underpass, overpass. Underneath, there's a tent city that has occurred. The county brought out facilities last Monday as we posted a vacate notice, it's a ten-day vacate notice, which will be this Thursday. We, we brought out bathrooms, we brought out hand-washing facilities and, and some garbage cans, but this Thursday, we're removing all those folks, and again, it's the, it's just moving them around. Until we come to a cohesive decision, it's always gonna be a challenge. And I don't have to tell anyone in the audience or anyone up here on the dais how difficult this issue is, but I'm hoping for a long-term solution. We've been talking, Marion Pitt has been involved in, with the county, so we're trying to find a solution. We've got some pretty decent ideas, but the only exciting idea that I have right now is we're going to be popular with the family. So I wanted to pass that on, and again, to, to the incomparable Mr. Shin-Yon, thank you for your service, for sure.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. Uh, Mari and Michelle? Is there speaking on the relocation homeless from the underpass? Michelle? Oh, come on, yeah.
We are residents of the Golden State Underpass encampment, and we're just wondering if anybody has any ideas, like by Thursday, because it's become a safety issue for us, folks. We're aware of a Facebook post that's instructing people to drive by twenty-four-seven laying into their horns. Over twenty-five of us have been attacked physically, beat down on the side of the road in the last month and a half. I mean, we've had over four of us killed in this city, and we have no protection, that's why we need to stick together, that's why we're underneath the overpass, safety in numbers. And unless we have any solutions, I don't really know what we're supposed to do. We're normal people, we're families, we're residents of Turlock. I did graduate here, thank you, on the Comeback Kid program at Turlock Adult School, but it's not because we're all drug addicts, it's not because we're all alcoholics, it's not because we're all disrespectful that we are homeless. It's for all different reasons. I mean, I've been part of Turlock since I was seven years old, and I feel forgotten about, I, I really do. The day that they brought the porta-potties and the hand-washing sanitizing stations, I mean, I cried, literally, you know, just because I could go to the bathroom when I needed to. That's a problem in this city. The Ham Center is cutting off dinners for us, so now we have no source of food, seven days a week now. And so we really need help from you guys. We're really trying our part to keep that area as clean as could be. There are individuals that always don't go with the rules, and we're coming down on them. We're trying as hard as we can. We don't want to be a nuisance to our city, we don't want to be an embarrassment, and that's what we feel like we are. We need your help. You know, I'm willing to work eight hours a day, community service, in exchange for any help that you want to give us. I mean, we're viable citizens here, we're educated, we're not, you know, not worth the time, we are worth the time. And I mean, this is, we're not going anywhere, we all live here. So, I mean, until we can figure out where we're supposed to go from underneath the overpass, we're all sticking together, because like I said, it's a safety issue for us now. It really is. And if you go on Facebook, you'll find the sites.
It's the petition that everybody signed to protest us having to leave.
I mean, I, I don't know what we're supposed to do or where we're supposed to go, I really don't.
All you're doing is pushing us back out on the streets. The, the streets of Turlock, Lander Avenue, wanted all the homeless people out of there. Now they're out of there. What are we gonna do?
So, so thank you for coming forward. One of the things that concerns me the most was the, the twenty-five attacks that you cited that is going on there, and I know, I don't know the jurisdiction, but I do know that we do know, we want to protect you if you're in the city limits, and if you're here in the city, and I know the chief has that, has that heart. So if you want to get together with the chief and make sure that you get that information to him about those attacks, that's something we want to talk to you about. I know Supervisor Kiesa went outside and talked to the other woman that came up here and spoke. So if you want to continue to speak with the supervisor, and also tomorrow, if you want to come down here with the city manager, he'd be, I think, willing to clear a schedule to sit down and talk with you about some solutions. All right, thank you. Is Ms. Diane Bartlett here? Come on up.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Diane Bartlett, I'm the supervising librarian at the Turlock Public Library. And as I was coming in tonight, some friends said, "You know, we really appreciate all the support that the Turlock community gives to the library." And thank you for that, because that's exactly what I was going to say, thank you all for you, for supporting us for our fifty years on Minaret, and thanks for coming out and celebrating that with us. Thanks for coming out to our building update meeting, and thank you for Councilmember DeHart attending that meeting. Things are, are moving forward, there are still planning stages for the building, we are expanding out, and they're, the county's putting together a, a package to fund that, and still working on, on plans. So preliminary plans were presented at that meeting, and we're still talking, we're staying in right there, and we're still talking, so. So thank you for those of you who, who ask, continue to ask about our building. For us, it's like regular programming back at the library. We are back to every Tuesday at four o'clock, we have programs for, for kids. Today, we had the Great Valley Museum attend and do an owl pellet program. We're doing owls and turkeys next weekend, Legos, and we're building things after reading the book called Rosie Revere the week after that, and then we'll have snowflake ornaments in December. Also, for our teens, we have our book meeting on the first of December at three o'clock, and we have our advisory board on December twelfth at four o'clock. We will also be having a couple of special programs next Monday at evening. At six o'clock, we'll be having a Harry Potter trivia night, this is a family event, you can participate individually or on a team, at least one of the team members has to be thirteen or older, so start reading, rereading all those Harry Potter books and come and see us, six o'clock on Monday. And then in December, on the tenth, at six-thirty, we'll have a special family story time with the mayor, is on our schedule. And on the twelfth, we will have the local ukulele group come and perform for the kids at ten o'clock, that's a Wednesday morning. We hope to see you at the library, and thank you again for your, all your support.
All right, thank you so much. Give her a round of applause. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Franton?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council, I'm here to talk about sales tax revenue. Been trying to talk about this for a long time. We used to have CVB services to help promote brand and market the city of Turlock, and tourism specifically supposedly supposed to get people to stay in hotels, that's where we collect the TOT money. Turlock's hotels have been full, I mean, a lot, for quite some time, very successful. We've been collecting the money. We were supposed to have a replacement program, we got rid of the Chamber of Commerce providing the CVB services. We even started the termination of the contract ninety days prior, really quick, to come up with a replacement. That was three and a half years ago. We have no replacement. There was a program, a presentation given by a consultant a year ago, I believe, almost a year ago today, and it had a survey done, it had a analysis, a strategic report, and that was a year ago. And we have nothing from it, I haven't even seen anything of it, maybe behind the scenes, guess you guys are looking over some logos or something, but it's not helping us with businesses and promoting the city and branding the city. We're a regional shopping destination. And on that survey, it said the two reasons people come to Turlock, to visit friends and family and go shopping, and then I think three or four was to do business. How do you think we're promoting regional shopping? That means outside the area. I don't see it, I don't see any aggressive implementation to go target people shopping from series that could go to the Modesto Costco, or they can come to the Turlock Costco, or Delhi, they can come to Turlock or go to Merced. But I don't understand why we were given a presentation a year ago then and nothing. And then every time I keep asking about this, I've seen projections, supposedly there were some basis around five percent too. I just saw an email today, despite seeing four down quarterly reports, and I guess there's some different ways of how those are actually compiled now compared to the previous ways, but it's still, it's still a decline, every way you look at it, the numbers, the lines going down, whatever. And first, it was like after two, which I had asked for, and one wasn't in the place where it was supposed to be, so I don't know how many people even looked at it. But that was for quarter three of two thousand seventeen, then we finally got quarter four of two thousand seventeen, both of those were down. Then the Turlock Journal did an article on it even, and it was basically some of the contents of an email saying that the sales tax revenue is our most, is, I think it was like one of our most volatile revenue sources, but yet not one single review of it. I haven't even ever heard a review about our sales tax revenue before this council. Shouldn't money be on the agenda every, I mean, I would say every time, but every month? Shouldn't we be wondering how much money we have, what we're doing, shouldn't there be actions to be taken? Everything's funded, police services. We saw what a crunch we're in and what we're gonna be in. So I see spending all the time on this council, I don't see anything about revenue, it should be regularly. I ask that you do something though, because we're up to the fourth quarter holiday season now, and I haven't seen one single change. So now, we just got the, the fourth sales tax quarterly report in a row now that's supposedly down. I just got an email today saying somehow, somehow it's up. It's up two percent, but I've seen down, 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 and down. And if the overall's up two percent, that's, I guess, but what's the projection? Did we plan on two percent? Did we plan on five? But two percent increase, what's that, is that year-over-year? Either way, I see four quarterly reports down, and the first time it was, hey, one, it is not anything to get worried about, maybe two. We got two, we got three, now we got four. And not on the agenda, no implementation I've seen, local businesses need support, we're a regional destination, we need regional marketing, everything's on the internet as far as promotion goes, I don't see any of those. I mean, again, why did we have the presentation? Can someone please get to working on this and please help out our economy? I mean, ASAP for the fourth quarter holiday season, I don't know what you can do, even twenty thousand dollars in Facebook ads, I don't know, but we need help, thanks.
I think Mr. Bill Bilson? Bill Bilson?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm Bill Bilson. I would like to give you a little rundown of why I'm here, a little bit of my background. In about nineteen sixty-five, I came to Turlock and bought out Bard Sports Shop. It was on Lander Avenue, right between Main Street and Columbia. Old building, wooden floors, high ceilings, and we had a bicycle shop in there and a sporting goods store. That was in sixty-five, a few years back. I was a young man then, I'm an old fellow now, close to ninety. In about seventy-eight, the city, well, actually it was earlier than that, the city widened Lander Avenue, and they tore down all the buildings on Lander, and there were vacant lots for sale. And I was fortunate enough to be able to purchase the corner of Lander and Columbia, two oh one Lander. And at that time, the city was widening the street, and they had a provision in the purchase price that I had to donate five feet of my property for a ten-foot city sidewalk, a public sidewalk, which I did. Then the city came along and planted some trees on part of that sidewalk. I did not want those trees there, but I had nothing to say about it. The trees are now huge, they're Chinese pistachios, and the root system is coming to the surface and pulling up the cement sidewalks. Now, we have, over the years, cleaned up all the leaves, kept the sidewalks clean. The leaves come in the parking lot, clog up the drains, we have to constantly take them, put them in the garbage can, get rid of them. That, we don't mind. Last week, I received this letter from Von Vargas telling me that we, I have, the property owner, has to repair the sidewalk because it has some cracks in it. The cracks came from the roots of the trees, which the city put in. The city has maintained those trees since nineteen seventy-eight. I'm not even allowed to cut a limb on one of them. All I'm allowed to do is to pick up the leaves. But now, I have been told that I must go in and have the sidewalk and the curbs replaced. Five years from now, the same thing's gonna happen again. The trees, our roots are gonna keep growing. That sidewalk, if it's being replaced, will be broken up again. So what I'm here tonight for is to ask the city to take hold of some of the responsibility that they have in putting the trees in fifty-some years ago. And take the trees out. Now, it's, it's a pretty good expense to do the sidewalk. And I really feel like it's the city's, the city sidewalk. I don't know the sidewalk. It's a public sidewalk. It's, I have, say this, I have, okay, just one moment. In my nineties, I have never heard of anybody having to pay for sidewalks for the city. So I'm asking the city to take responsibility. At least come in and help us, get rid of the trees, fix the sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bilson, for coming. I got my PE clothes at your first.
I was gonna say, there's a few of you here that I.
Yeah, absolutely.
You were probably just in kitty curves when I started it.
No, but we definitely, we wanna work with you and explain to you our process for this. I know Director Van Gilder and Juan, you're in the back. Maybe if you guys wanna meet with Mr. Bilson, explain, we'll, we'll work with you and see what we can do.
I've talked with, I've talked with Juan. And he has informed me of all of the regulations. But I really feel that the city has some responsibility for putting those trees in. And especially when I, I put up a pretty good stink about it when they put, were gonna put them in. Because I, I had an idea that that was gonna happen, and it has. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Additional comments or questions for public participa- participation? Yes, please come forward.
Okay, dear Mr. Mayor and Council and everyone else, I'm Ramon Rodriguez. As you know, on that intersection of High Street and Lander, we know that Turlock is growing and it's still gonna grow. But on that, today, I was driving that street down and I seen, and I drive that street every time, but it lacks like a, a left turn signal. Oh, it has the three traffic lights, but every time I make a left turn, I had to wait for another car on the other lane to pass. Also, same thing on Canal with Olive Street and Main Street.
With most of my councilmember Dehart, second by councilmember Scare, click, please call the roll.
Adopting the amended consent calendar. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. And item five F, who has pulled this? There it is, councilmember Scare. Director Van Gilder? Oh, you're English, nice name.
Yes, Allison, I received an inquiry on this. And the question was, did we not previously purchase, I think, two vehicles already for the transit center? And the question is, why, why are we getting a third one? Do we really need a third one for maintenance at the transit center?
So I'm here on behalf of Wayne York and Nathan Bray. And they had asked if there were any questions that I be able to facilitate that. We anticipated the purchase of one maintenance vehicle. But through that, through that activity, we've learned, now that we're staffing it with two people, they're not working the same shift. And so there's going to be overlap time where there could be the need to have two vehicles there. And so that's why you're seeing this purchase come back. I am not aware that there were two maintenance vehicles purchased. I know for my, I have two maintenance staffs that work, that are assigned to that facility. We had one vehicle designated for their use. But then through that conversation and planning, and when we were coming up with the work schedules for the individuals in order to cover the entire opening time for the center, it was recognized that a second vehicle might be necessary, and that's what you have before you tonight. Keeping in mind that while we might have somebody working at the transit center, the other individual might have to go out onto the route and clean up a bus stop or dump trash, things of that nature. And so it just gives us that flexibility so that they're not having to coordinate the use of the truck if they both have a need for it at the same time.
Oh, do you have some?
I think the other vehicle that was purchased was actually for the transit staff and the transit managers. There was another, but it wasn't for the maintenance crews. That's the difference in the vehicles for different staff members, different areas.
Okay, thank you. And I wanna apologize for not bringing this. Normally, I send you the advance notice on these questions. But again, this was last minute, just before the meeting started. So I apologize for not the advance notice, but thank you for the explanation.
Additional comments or questions from the council or the audience on the side? Okay, bring it back. What's the pleasure of the council? Would you like to move forward? All right, a motion by councilmember Scare, seconded by councilmember Boobla. Click, please call the roll.
Approving the purchase and delivery of one two thousand nineteen Ford F-250 truck from downtown Ford Sales of Sacramento, California, to be used solely as a non-revenue transit maintenance support vehicle by city maintenance staff assigned to the Roger K. Fall Transit Center to the State of California Contract Number One, One Eight, Two Three, Two Zero Eight, in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, without compliance to formal bid procedure pursuant to Turlock Municipal Code Section Two Seven Zero Eight B Four. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We have no final readings tonight, but for our public hearings, we have a public hearing for the proposed annexation number twenty-five to CFD number two. Katie, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of the public. The project before you is the twenty-fifth annexation to Community Facilities District Number Two. Community Facilities District Number Two was formed in two thousand four to help provide additional general fund revenue to mitigate the impacts of new residents on police, fire, park maintenance and recreation services. Annexation number twenty-five is for a parcel map located eight, at eight twenty-four Angeles Street. And it's proposing to split one parcel into two single-family lots. Madam Clerk, can you refer, confirm receipt of the following documents? Proof of publication of the notice of public hearing.
Yes, Katie, the notice was published on October thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Signed waiver and consent form.
Yes.
Completed and signed ballot.
Yes, the ballot received from the property owner authorized the annexation of the property to the existing Community Facilities District Number Two.
Signed certificate of clerk regarding receipt of property owner waiver and consent form and the ballot declaring election results.
Yes.
Mayor Soyset, it is appropriate at this point to open the public hearing? Or if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them at that time, this time.
If there are any questions, then I will also open the public hearing. Questions from the council or from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on. What is the pleasure of the council on the two resolutions? All right, we have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by councilmember Dehart. Click, please call the roll.
Calling a special mail ballot election, respecting proposed annexation number twenty-five to existing Community Facilities District Number Two Services mitigation. Declaring the results of mail ballot election, respecting proposed annexation number twenty-five to Community Facilities District Number Two Services mitigation and ordering annexation. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much. Moving on to scheduled matters, a request to approve an agreement with Crime Tech Security Services for unarmed private security services at the Roger K. Fall Transit Center.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Madera, City's Transit Planner. The item before you tonight is the award of a contract to Crime Tech Security for private security services at the Roger K. Fall Transit Center. First, I wanted to provide some background regarding the overall security strategy for the transit center. About a year ago, we started working the police, with the police department on identifying a security strategy. We considered private security as part of those discussions, but ultimately agreed that having a police officer at the transit center during normal service hours was the best approach. The Transit Resource Off, Resource Officer, or TRO, would likely achieve greater compliance when compared with a private security officer and be able to engage in community policing at the site, building a rapport and positive relationship with passengers, minimize impacts to patrol. However, staff has since recognized that with the addition of a new multimillion-dollar facility, the city vehicles, with city vehicles soon to be parked onsite overnight without the benefit of a secured parking area. And with the decision to move city transit staff to the site as part of future improvements, that a private security solution is appropriate during the non-service hours as well. So to recap, our revised strategy for security at the transit center follows three distinct steps. One, award an agreement this evening to Crime Tech for private security services to allow for a continuation of twenty-four-seven site security without a gap in coverage. These services would continue through the end of the contract term on June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, unless otherwise scaled back or terminated early. Second is continue working with the police department regarding the TRO positions to determine when those positions may be staffed. The positions have already been allocated and will continue to be funded in future years, both in the transit claim filed with Stan Cog and the city budget. This ensures funding is not a barrier once the officers are available. And three, once the TRO positions have been filled, city transit staff and police staff will evaluate any security concerns and threats at that time to determine if private security services should be enhanced, scaled back or eliminated. Staff would then seek city council approval for any increases in cost or extensions to the agreement with Crime Tech. With all that background in mind, that brings us to tonight's proposed action. Staff reviewed eight proposals in response to the council authorized RFP for unarmed security services released in September. All of the proposals were responsive. Those staff found the Crime Tech proposal best demonstrated their understanding of the project's scope, best demonstrated their capacity and experience to provide the service, provided a reasonable cost proposal and provided the overall best value to the city. As such, staff is recommending the city council award a multi-year agreement to Crime Tech Security for unarmed security services at the transit center, allowing for a continuation of those services until such a time that transit resource officers are available. The annual cost for those services is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. No general fund monies will be used. All costs associated with security at the site will be paid with transit funds and will not negatively impact the city's fair recovery ratio. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Yes, councilmember Scare?
Yes, I understand that the funds of this, for this is gonna come out of transit and not out of the city general fund. I still would like, I asked previously, and I would still like to see the cost breakdown of using the, or whatever private security firm as opposed to the two TROs. And then if, I realize the money's coming from transit money, not, not a bit, what would be the difference in the two? I just wanna see what the cost difference is in the breakdown.
All right, very good.
If you can get that to me, I'd like to see it.
Actually, I might have it right here. The projected salary for one police officer, step one, is sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars per year. That includes recent, the recent increases to and from the labor negotiations. The projected benefits per officer are projected at forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixteen per year. Total salary plus benefits for two TROs are estimated at two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars per year. And so comparing that to the one fifty-eight, nine seventy-six. And with the Crime Tech contract, that is eighteen dollars per hour and a holiday rate of twenty-seven dollars per hour is how they come up with their numbers.
So I'm looking at about seventy-some, a thousand dollar difference. And this is just basic salary, right? It's not counting benefits.
For the TROs, that did include benefits, yes.
That did include benefits, okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Additional questions from the audience? Yes, Mr. Churewiler.
Milton, Milton Churewiler, Turlock citizen, I have one question. Have you checked to see what the city of Modesto is doing? Do they have a private security firm in charge of their transit services? Or do they have police affiliation?
Actually, we did, and they have both, actually running concurrently. So they do have Modesto PD onsite and, and private security running at the same time. I'm not sure if Modesto PD is available all night or not, but they are there, there during the day.
Good question. Any additional questions? Bring it back. What additional questions do we have, or do you wanna move forward? It's the pleasure of the council. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? With most of my councilmembers scared and seconded by Vice Mayor, Jacob? Click, please call the roll.
Approving an agreement with Crime Tech Security Services of Turlock, California, for unarmed private security services at the Roger K. Fall Transit Center in an annual not to exceed amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and a total not to exceed amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, Fund Four Two Six, beginning November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Boobla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyset?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item B, a request to accept a grant from Game Time as part of the two thousand seventeen California Parks and Recreation Society's statewide health play training and funding initiative. Mr. Vargas?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So before you guys, we have another opportunity similar to what we had back in March. If you remember back in March, we had an identical grant opportunity for the replacement of the Summer Fair Park playground equipment. So this one is another opportunity, but for Rotary Park. Rotary Park is twenty-five years old. The playground itself was installed back in nineteen ninety-three. So it's kind of coming up on its age of, age of use. So for Game Time, we have a, it would be a fifty-fifty shared cost on the main structure itself. And then we have funds available. Currently, we have forty-eight thousand dollars in our, in the line for a park replacement project. The total park replacement project, including the softball replacement, comes to sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine, forty-nine. Of that, twenty-three thousand, two seventy-four would actually come from the, the grants. And I use the, the word grant loosely because if you look in the, the attachment, the exhibit, it's really a discount from them. So because it's a discount, it's, it's treated a little differently as far as the, using the county's contract because it's already been competitively bid. So we're not accepting grant money, but they coin it as a grant. So that's why we're still coming to you guys, kinda just giving you guys, putting it all into, all into frame. So with the discount, and it's already been competitively bid with, with the county of Mecklenburg in North, where was it? North Carolina. So with that, we fall in line with the, with the municipal code. So we're not going around any loops by using it. It's a competitively bid process. So we're pretty much just seeking out to use forty-five thousand of it. we're pretty much just seeking out to use forty-five thousand of it, of the forty-eight thousand for the park replacement, um, project. So again, it's, it's mirroring, mirroring what we did in Summer Fair, but now we have the opportunity for Rotary, and if we continue this, we actually have the opportunity for Montana Park, which Marin has been, um, helping us out with on trying to secure funding. That one's gonna be a little bit more. It's about a one-point-five-million-dollar project, so this is a little icing on the cake for us for now. If you guys have any questions regarding it, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Any questions, comments for one? Any questions, comments from the audience, from Mr. Javargas? Alright, bring it back. Uh, what's the pleasure of the council on these two resolutions?
Oh, a grant's ready.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by Councilmember Iskare. Uh, quick, please, call the roll.
Accepting a grant from Game Time as part of the two thousand seventeen California Parks and Recreation Society's statewide healthy play training and funding initiative in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars for the Rotary Park Playground Replacement Project. Approving the purchase of the Rotary Park Playground Equipment and Engineered Wood Fiber from the two thousand seventeen California Parks and Recreation Society's statewide healthy play training and funding initiative in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents through the state of North Carolina, County of Mecklenburg, competitively bid contract for the Rotary Park Playground Replacement Project in compliance with Turlock Municipal Code Two dash seven dash zero eight V four. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Bubla?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Thank you so much, Ma.
Thank you, guys.
Item C, a request to authorize staff to proceed with a call for public art, giving the original artist first right of refusal to replace the live water feature aspect of a clivia statue with a ceramic tile cover and authorize the water to be turned off to avoid water damage and minimize maintenance. Uh, before we begin on this item, I wanna thank staff, uh, for working so hard on this, having the public hearings, working with the commission to bring this back. Um, I do though wanna, uh, let the audience know that, um-
We have two vacancies in two thousand eighteen, and for our CDVG Community Grant Selection Committee, we have various vacancies that become effective on December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Interested citizens who are interested in serving on any of the board commissions or committees are encouraged to either use the application that can be found in the agenda packet or to contact the Administrative Services Department or visit our website to obtain an application. The application closing date for each of the commissions is also outlined in the agenda packet, but to briefly go over that for you, the Planning Commission and the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, the application deadline is December seventh, two thousand eighteen, at five P.M. The application for the CDVG Community Grant Selection Committee deadline is Monday, January seventh, two thousand nineteen, at five P.M. Appointments to these commissions and committees is anticipated to be tentatively scheduled for January two thousand nineteen. And if anyone has any questions regarding the application process or serving on our boards or commissions, to please contact the Administrative Services Department or the Office of the City, quick. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, Development Services Department has a written update within the packet. Uh, Fire Department has, uh, a verbal update. Chief, call on.
I'd like to wear Mayor Gary Soyseth, Council. I'm happy to report on November first, the Turlock City Fire Department held our annual awards and recognition ceremony at Station Thirty-One. The Fire Department's recognition awards were given to Captain Kevin Forsyte, city employees, Human Resources Manager Sarah Eddy, and Public Maintenance Supervisor Ray Garcia. They were recognized for all they do for the city and for the Fire Department. Community acknowledgements awards went to Oscar, uh, Avala of Costless Market on Main Street and PNF Medals on Broadway. Sixteen Turlock City firefighters instructors were given certificates for their outstanding work for training our new recruits and our fire academies. Twenty-nine wildland fire certificates for strike team deployments and single resources were handed out to firefighters deployed throughout the year, helping protect neighbors' lives and property. Chief's commendations awards were presented to three of our captains working on our management system and our computed aided dispatch project. We also recognized three engine companies for the heroic efforts under Battalion Chief Gary Lunsford. Engine Thirty-One, Thirty-Three, and Thirty-Four utilized the Lucas device during two EMS calls, regaining spontaneous circulation on one of the patients, ultimately saving that person's life. The customer service award was earned by Engineer Tony Nascimento. The Turlock City Fire Department two thousand eighteen firefighter of the year is Captain Kevin Tidwell. Also, November ninth, eighteen hundred hours, the Turlock Masonic Lodge honored the Turlock Fire Department's two thousand seventeen firefighter of the year, Danny Timko. And in late June of two thousand nineteen, Masonic Lodge will be honoring our two thousand eighteen firefighter of the year, Captain Kevin Tidwell. It was an outstanding event, and it was very well received.
Thank you so much, Chief. Any questions, Ma? Now, thank you. Alright, uh, Municipal Services has none, Parks and Recreation, uh, they have additional public hearing to lighting projects. Uh, Director Van Gildre, you wanna talk about that?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, uh, tomorrow evening at Pittman High School, six o'clock, there will be a public meeting to receive comment on the feasibility study for the lighting out at the sports complex. If you'll recall, this was, uh, something that the council, uh, was interested in exploring. Um, the consultants will be on hand to answer any questions, and this is part of the environmental study that would need to be required should council eventually decide to move forward with installing lights on each of the softball fields. Um, the good news is, so far, um, we believe that, um, there are no major issues that could not be mitigated. However, we always wanna go out to the community, particularly those living in the area, to make sure there isn't something that we're not aware of, and to receive that feedback to, um, allow council to make the most informed decision. So again, tomorrow night, six o'clock at Pittman High School, um, the community is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Allison. Alright, we have new updates from the Police Department. City manager comments?
Uh, just a few notes, Mr. Mayor. Um, it was, uh, my pleasure to join, uh, Fire Department, representatives from other, uh, city departments at the awards ceremony, and it was, uh, really well done and a lot of well-earned recognition. I'd like to once again thank the, uh, thank the chief and thank the, what is it, six, uh, firefighters who are now off fighting campfire. Um, they serve our city and they serve our state, and I appreciate that. It was, uh, a great event on Saturday night at the Police Widows and Orphans Foundation. Gala Under the Stars, Chief, is that, I probably mangled the name. Um, but it was extremely well attended, not merely by members of the force and their friends and families, but also by residents of our community, and I'm glad to know that a great deal, uh, a great deal of money was raised for some very notable causes in the city. Um, and then finally, joining, uh, so many of you at the Veterans Day Ceremony. And I would just like to take an opportunity to, um, let, uh, Councilmember Dehart know that, uh, I thought he did an outstanding job, um, at the podium, and, uh, his personal reflections, I think, were certainly on point for the day and, uh, made it mean all that much more. Uh, there are a couple of other things that will be happening. I wanted to let you, as council, and let the public know. At our next council meeting, um, city staff will provide a report to council on progress on the goals and implementation plan that was adopted in two thousand fifteen. Um, I think we felt it was a good opportunity to kind of close the loop on that and explain what we've been able to accomplish, and some of it you already know, but I wanna put it in one place at one time. And, uh, some of the things that remain, uh, remain to be completed. And at some point, I think into the new year, is to promote a greater discussion of a strategic plan for the city, and I'll get to that in just a second. That night, we'll also have a recap, a similar recap, thanks to Marin Pitt, of our economic development strategic plan. Again, a chance for us to, you know, to take stock of where we are now as we transition to a new council and the things that have been accomplished, and I appreciate her work on that. Um, this will all kind of be in service to, once we round the corner into January, it would be, uh, your city managers' desire to put together a, um, a council retreat. Um, not a closed meeting, but a council retreat where, uh, members discuss, um, the development of a, uh, vision, mission, and goals statement. We've had a lot of, uh, faints in that direction in different larger projects, but I'd like us to, uh, as a city, to have an overarching definition of what vision is for Turlock, what our mission is, and, and, and with, with the, with the, um, um, goal, with the, um, value statement, how do we judge ourselves as we move toward those objectives? Um, and I hope that it will be taken in the spirit of, this is a definitive statement, not something that gets re-upped every two years or four years. That would be the strategic plan, or that would be the operational plans, that this is, that this becomes our foundation. So, um, your department heads are working together on a lot of important projects that will support this council's ability to make informed decisions and sound public policy in the future. Um, we have not been idle these last, uh, few months since July, and I appreciate their work and their support and their recognition of the value of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Speaker, for the agenda, non-agenda items? Don't see any. Council items of future consideration? Don't see any? Yes.
Um, hoping, following, uh, Mr. Franzin's comments, that maybe there is something, uh, Mr. City Manager, that we could do even, uh, perhaps within your own purview of allocations, but if we can kinda spice up, uh, the, the city of Turlock and people purchasing here for the holidays, that would be really helpful. Uh, we, we have to do something to at least try and influence people to come here and to people to think about. Oh, my gosh, yeah, you know, I hadn't thought about that, but I, I'm running up to Modesto to go to the mall, and I thought I'd go buy there. No, 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 you, you stay here. You buy your, everything here, and we really, you know, we need to push for that. And so if there's a way that we can kinda brand real quickly, something to make us get that out there and, and market the, all the wonderful restaurants and stores and everything in our community, that if we can do that, I would really appreciate it.
Ms. City Manager, can you?
Um, yeah, I think that's, uh, an important goal, an important objective for us. I will, uh, work with staff and take a look at what can be accomplished, or what'll be the best impact, um, in the short run. And I do wanna, you know, support the comments that Marin has made previously and in her emails. Um, this issue with the reporting of sales taxes, it's the real deal from the state. The state is not telling us how much has been collected in sales tax. They're telling us how much they're able to calculate that they will pay us. And there's gonna be a true-up at some point, and we're gonna see an influx of cash. It's not simply the city of Turlock. This is happening to cities around the state, that the, um, the, the amount that they're receiving from the state is not a direct connection to the amount that the state is receiving from the, um, from the businesses. So, we are, I mean, I think this is gonna wash out by the end of the fiscal year, but as far as something between now and the end of the year, we'll certainly take a look at how we can maximize, um, sales tax revenue and people shopping locally. You know, live local, work locally, shop locally. Um, and I would like us to really focus on a more long-term approach to that in the fullness of time, um, in, in terms of improving our economic base.
Thank you. Council comments? Yes, Councilmember Iskare?
Uh, just briefly, uh, I just wanna, uh, make aware that, uh, at the next meeting, the twenty-seventh, um, the Ad hoc committee is going to be, uh, prepared to make a brief report on the work we've been doing, the research we've been doing, uh, on the cannabis, cannabis, uh, situation. Basically, it'll be just a brief report, it won't be any, it just, it'd be an update.
Perfect. Just no comments, any questions? Yes, Council?
I'd like to thank the City Manager for the comments about the Veterans, uh, Day, uh, Ceremony. I thought that was a wonderful event. I think that anybody that did have the opportunity to attend, uh, truly got something out of it and was a great reminder of what we all, uh, like to believe about our veterans and what they've done for us as a community. Uh, secondarily, and Diane Bartlett mentioned it, uh, Mayor, that I did have the opportunity, I may have mentioned it already, but, you know, I'm, I am seventy and I am forgetful. So, uh, I did have the opportunity to go to the, uh, library, uh, project unveil, and, uh, it was absolutely wonderful, the, uh, ideas that, uh, were floated and the work that's gone into the project. It's a, uh, it's a wonderful, uh, preservation of the park-like setting at the, at the library property. And I think everybody here in town will be very, very pleased with what they ultimately see there. So it's very encouraging for them. Thanks, uh, to Supervisor Kiasa, the board, uh, for the work in allocation of funds, finding the funds in the first place and then directing, directing them to, uh, to our way. Thanks.
Just no comments? Alright, I just have two brief ones. Um, I have asked Vice Mayor Jacob to chair the next meeting. Uh, I am going to be at a family obligation, so I won't be able to be here. But second, also, um, this council is in an era of transition. Um, as you guys know, we did have an election, and, uh, and so I know that Councilmember Dehart, uh, while everything is not official, I know that you are working, uh, well with your counterpart, Vice Mayor Jacob. I know you are working well with your counterpart, and I look forward to working with, uh, you, Councilmember Bubla. I know you're superstitious, so I know you're not calling anything officially. Uh, but I do wanna say congratulations, and I wanna say that I know that my, uh, office door is always open. I look forward to working with you on these, uh, issues. I will be off, offloading a few events coming up, like a Christmas tree lighting, so you don't know about that yet, but you're gonna be taking that over hopefully for me. Uh, but, uh, again, I just wanna say congratulations. You are the one person here that has, uh, has won, so let's give her a round of applause for her hard work. The new council's success is the city's success, and so I know we're all gonna work hard to make sure that they're welcomed and they have all the information they can, uh, to be successful. Closed session. City Attorney, what do we have?
We have one item, Mayor, a conference legal counsel and suspended litigation under California Government Code five four nine five six point nine D two.
Alright, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Dehart, seconded by, uh, Mayor-elect Bubla. Uh, all is fair, say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.